Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Se go ani buju endio wachea kue kue. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So we were just meeting in committee the whole closed meeting. We discussed a couple of items, one with respect to strategic waterfront acquisitions and disposals and potential future federal divestitures, and then also a piece on education or training with respect to the Code of Conduct and council staff relations. So I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting.
Moved by councillor McLaren, seconded by councillor Hutchison, that council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
Please vote. And that carries. Next, we will move to approval of the addits. There are two addits to approve, just noting that council, we did approve the first item and the first addendum before our closed session. So we have the withdrawal of new motion number one, we have a supplementary report for the planning clause four, report number 12, and then we also have an addition of bylaw. So can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Doherty. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, are there any disclosures of potential community interest? Okay, seeing none, we have no presentations this evening, but we do have two delegations. First, Anastasia M. Lintner, environmental lawyer, will appear before council to speak to clause one of report number 12, received from the CAO with respect to Bill 66, Restoring Ontario's Competitiveness Act 2018. And just a reminder to our delegations that you have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you very much for allowing me to present to you tonight. There is a one-page little handout that has everything I wanted to say, even if I don't get time to say it. I am very proud to be resident of the City of Kingston, and when I moved here in 2012, one of the things that impressed me the most was the commitment to be Canada's most sustainable city. And since then, I've observed how committed this community is to community engagement, to the public engagement framework. And with those things that I'm so proud of, I'm deeply concerned about the proposals that are coming from the Ontario Government around Bill 66. And the proposed open-for-business-planning bylaw proposal, it runs counter to our community's goals, and particularly those that relate to sustainability and engagement. And I'm really concerned that the open-for-business message in the government's Open for Business Action Plan really seems to be one where it is saying that we gain jobs at the expense of protecting the environment and drinking water, and I thought that we were past that kind of dialogue. Kingston has long recognised that prosperity includes ecosystem and economic health, and that our planning system as a whole in Ontario has evolved over the last four decades to be one where we plan for complete communities, where the local and provincial interests are communicated and respected in our plans and policies. And I'm here tonight just to ask that council adopt a resolution that sends some of these messages to the provincial government. The open-for-business-planning bylaw is one that proposes a new tool that would fast-track developments that are going to produce new jobs. It stipulates provisions in the Planning Act, and several other laws will not apply, including being consistent with the Perimeter Policy Statement, our official plan here in Kingston, and the Kataraki Source Protection Plan. There won't be prior public notice and consultation requirements, and there will not be rights to appeal to the local planning and appeal tribunal. I think this is concerning for us in particular for four reasons. One, it favours new job creation over what we already have, and particularly I've seen submissions from farmers that it seems like their businesses aren't as important as creating developments with new jobs. It treats environmental protections as red tape and burdensome regulation, which I don't think we agree with. It creates a system that isn't transparent because there won't be public notice until after the bylaw is passed and enforced, and it is contrary to good planning. We have seen submissions from the Ontario Professional Planners Institute, where their members that are surveyed, 77% somewhat are strongly opposed to that proposed bylaw tool, and 83% are somewhat or strongly agree that it undermines our key planning rules. I'm very, I think that the staff report is excellent, I commend it to you to read. I have what we would call some very deep-in-the-weeds detailed comments that I have sent to staff and I will leave you with. And my recommendation tonight is that council, by resolution, communicate that we are open for business and we're committed to climate resilience, safe drinking water, protecting our natural heritage, and our active community engagement, and that the council opposes the planning bylaw tool as it currently exists, and that if there are successor or similar proposals coming forward, that you look through them, review them, and comment again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Boll?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I was under the understanding that the Schedule 10 portion had already been removed, so I'm a little, so as far as that goes, have you looked at it since it's been removed, and do you still have concerns with other portions, or was it predominantly about Schedule 10?
So I have two-part answer to that. First of all, the Minister has committed to removing it when the legislature comes back, so it hasn't happened yet. It would still have to go through the legislative process, and we hope we can hold them to their promise to do that. And then the second thing is that this bill also contains another schedule, Schedule 5, which will eliminate the Toxics Reduction Act in 2021, and that is also of concern. It's mentioned in the staff report and could be something that council also says is of concern to them.
Thank you. Okay, see any other questions? Thank you very much. Our next delegation this evening is Sarah Harmer, who will appear before council to speak to clause one of report number 12 from the CAO with respect to Bill 66, Restoring Ontario's Competitiveness Act 2018.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Patterson and council members. I'm here to say a few words about Bill 66 and natural heritage protection in Kingston. As a citizen who has lived for over 20 years in the countryside district, I'm sorry, councillor Rouschoff's not here tonight, but I live within the Collins Creek watershed near Elginburg. So when the province announced Bill 66 in mid-December, I was very concerned about what it could mean for significant wetlands, for forests, for grade-A farmland, drinking water, and species-at-risk habitats. The province was presenting the bill as a means to remove planning and environmental red tape, but based on discussions and information from the Canadian Environmental Law Association, Lake Ontario Waterkeeper, and others, I learned that Bill 66, Schedule 10, and the open-for-business bylaw provision put everything from wetlands and forestry to government transparency and even democracy at risk. I was clearly not alone in my concerns, as I understand it, over 50,000 people submitted comments to the province, and at least 15 municipalities submitted comment as well opposing Bill 66. On January 23rd, as we've heard, our neighbour MP and Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Mr Steve Clark, announced on Twitter that after receiving so much public pressure, the government was planning to remove Schedule 10 from the bill when the legislature resumed. Despite this announcement, I am here to strongly agree with the staff report 19039 in not supporting the bill as it is currently written, because as staff has said, it "has potential to be contrary to policy direction adopted by council in the official plan", and because it is "contrary to council's commitment to transparency and citizen engagement. I also think council should be explicit in stating that it is opposed to the open-for-business planning bylaw as currently exists in Schedule 10, and would not make use of it if passed as drafted. Stepping back to see a slightly wider picture, I would also ask this council to seek to understand the connectivity between recent announcements from the provincial government, from Bill 66 to changes to the Environment Commissioner's office, to the growth plan, and to the Endangered Species Act review, to name a few. Council may not be aware, but on January 19th, the province announced a review for the Endangered Species Act. Citizens, organisations, and municipal governments have until March 4th, less than a month from now, to commit, or sorry, to comment on this review. We need to understand, I believe, that the threats in Schedule 10 of Bill 66 that alarmed so many of us are some of the same concerns that this review of the Endangered Species Act bring up, with its focus on finding efficiencies for business and removing red tape. When Ontario's Endangered Species Act was passed in 2008, it was considered world-class in its rigor to recover species at risk. I know firsthand as a citizen organiser at the time in Burlington's Niagara escarpment that species-at-risk protections did actually protect wetlands and drinking water. In that case, it was the Jefferson Salamanders' legal protection that saved the whole forest, and indeed perhaps the whole of the Mount Nemo Plateau. Unfortunately, in 2003, our once-world-class Endangered Species Act was watered down with amendments. These amendments have led to huge exemptions and countless permits, allowing aggregates and other landowners with commercial interests to destroy habitat and avoid the intent of the Endangered Species Act. So going into this 10-year review, our legislation has been substantially weakened. There has never been a better time for vigilance at our municipal level to speak up for necessary long-term environmental protections. Kingston council needs to publicly ensure that we're doing all we can for these crucial living systems within our wide boundaries, and to recognise the need for up-to-date study and mapping as natural heritage areas grow and change. Kingston strives to be the most sustainable city in Canada. We reject the false economy-versus-environment narrative that is required to justify the provincial government's red tape removal approach to environmental regulation.
30 seconds.
The huge public pushback on Bill 66 and Schedule 10 shows, in fact, the approach to planning that people in Ontario want. It is through this outcry to Bill 66, as the question of whether people want open-for-business at the cost of safe drinking water, protect species, and intact systems. The answer was clear, we don't want that. I ask that along with the earlier request regarding Bill 66, that council direct staff to report on the Endangered Species Act review. Thank you.
Thank you. That was exactly five minutes. Well done, Ms Harmer. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Stroud?
Thanks, Your Worship, and thank you for your presentation. If you, if, sorry, if one of us, 13, happened to be stuck in an elevator with the Premier of Ontario, and we had 30 seconds, what should we say to him as an alternative if he really wants an open-for-business environment?
I think comprehensive planning that makes, gives clarity to people who want to develop so that we get to, we can get to a no quicker and we can get to a yes quicker. So maybe there is some room to make more clarity with decision-making, but in my experience, we have, we have seen so much degradation and so much piecemeal planning that, yeah, I think it is to look at the big picture for all concerned.
Second question, do you think there is a specific area of the Kingston watershed region that is most particularly at risk that worries you as an environmentalist?
Well, we have really incredible intact forests and watersheds throughout Kingston. I mean, it's the rural area where I live, it's, it's full of provincially significant wetlands, endangered species, protected habitats. So I think biodiversity loss is, is a massive issue worldwide, and we have a lot of precious biodiversity to be stewards of here. I think when you, when you're creating exemptions for developers and aggregates to be able to get permits to destroy areas that are ostensibly protected under the Endangered Species Act, we need to, we need to strengthen the act right now rather than keep diminishing it.
Okay, see no other questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so we have no further delegations this evening. We do have one briefing. John Bolanyoni, City Clerk, will provide introductory remarks and introduce Jeffrey Abrams and Janice Atwood-Pococksky, co-principals of Principles Integrity, who will provide a briefing with respect to clause one, report number 13 from the CAO with respect to the transmittal of annual report from Principles Integrity.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We're pleased to be here to introduce Jeff Abrams and Janice Atwood-Pococksky. They're co-principals of Principles Integrity. They've been our integrity commissioners since November of 2017. One of the things that our entire commission is responsible for is providing annual report dealing with the activities over the past year, and they will be here to provide some highlights, and they're prepared to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here, to be able to provide our annual report in person. We have been the integrity commissioner for the City of Kingston since November of 2017, and this annual report covers the period over the last 13 months, November to December of 2018. The purpose of an integrity commissioner's annual report is to provide the public with the opportunity to understand the ethical wellbeing of the city's elected and appointed officials through the lens of our activities. This being our first annual report to council, we also take the opportunity to introduce ourselves and state our perspective on our role. In 2017, we formed Principles Integrity, a partnership focused on accountability and governance matters for municipalities. Since its formation, Principles Integrity has been appointed as integrity commissioner and occasionally as lobbyist registrar and closed-meeting investigator in over 30 municipalities. The role of integrity commissioner is mandated under the Municipal Act, and all municipalities must have a code of conduct. The City of Kingston has had a code of conduct and access to municipal, to an integrity commissioner for several years. The integrity commissioner's statutory role is to carry out the following functions in an independent manner: advise on ethical policy development, educate on matters relating to ethical behaviour, provide on request advice and opinions to members of council and local boards, provide on request advice and opinions to council, provide a mechanism to receive inquiries, often referred to as complaints, which allege a breach of ethical responsibilities, resolve complaints, and where it is in the public interest to do so, investigate, report, and make recommendations to council within the statutory framework while guided by council's code, policies, and protocols. This might contrast with the popular yet incorrect view that the role of the integrity commissioners primarily to hold elected officials to account, to investigate alleged transgressions, and to recommend punishment. The better view is that the integrity commissioners serve as an independent resource and guide focus, and a guide focused on enhancing the municipality's ethical culture. The operating philosophy of Principles Integrity recites this perspective: "We believe there is one overarching objective for a municipality in appointing an integrity commissioner, and that is to raise the public's perception that its elected and appointed officials conduct themselves with integrity. Our mantra is: the perception that a community's elected representatives are operating with integrity is the glue which sustains local democracy. We live in a time when citizens are sceptical of their elected representatives at all levels. The overarching objective in appointing an integrity commissioner is to ensure the existence of robust and effective policies, procedures, and mechanisms that enhance the citizens' perception that their council and local boards meet established ethical standards, and where they do not, there exists a review mechanism that serves the public interest." The work of the integrity commissioner falls into basically three general categories: the category of policy development and education, category of advice that we provide on request to members of council, staff, and members of local boards, and the area of complaint investigation and resolution. Regarding policy development and education, shortly after our engagement, we endeavoured to meet individually with members of council to better understand their concerns and issues. Recently, in November of 2018, we had the opportunity to provide broad-based training to council. At the request of the city, we attended council to provide guidance with regard to recognising and respecting differentiation in the role of members of council and the role of the administration, anticipating the coming council staff relations policy, which is mandated to be in place by March of 2019, and providing support to senior staff on policy development. Under the heading of advice, the advice function of the integrity commissioner is available to all members of council and where applicable, their staff and members of local boards on matters relating to the Code of Conduct, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, and any other matter touching upon the ethical conduct of members. Advice provided by the integrity commissioner is confidential and independent, and where all the relevant facts are disclosed is binding upon the integrity commissioner. Our advice is typically provided in a short advice memorandum which confirms all relevant facts and provides with clarity our analysis and a recommended course of action. Although advice is confidential, we can advise that some of the issues we provided guidance on this year arose in the context of properly identifying and appropriately recognising actual and perceived conflicts of interest. The clarifications and guidance provided to members seem to be readily understood and Our approach to reviewing complaints starts with a determination as to whether an inquiry to us is within our jurisdiction, or is beyond a trifling matter, is not either frivolous or vexatious, and importantly, whether in its totality it is in the public interest to pursue. We always look to the possibility of informal resolution in favour of informal resolution over formal investigation and reporting. Once a formal investigation is commenced, the opportunity to seek informal resolution is not abandoned. Where we are able to resolve a matter without concluding a formal investigation, our practice is to provide a written explanation to the complainant to close the file. Often, the potentially respondent member is involved in the preliminary fact-finding and will also be provided with an explanation. While also a courtesy, the provision of an explanation minimises the potential for a formal review being undertaken by the Office of the Ombudsman should the complainant pursue further recourse. Where formal investigations commence, they are conducted under the tenets of procedural fairness, and members are confidentially provided with the name of the complainant and such information as is necessary to enable them to respond to the allegations raised. In only one case in the period covered by this report has an inquiry reached the formal investigation stage. The circumstances of that investigation were unusual in that the alleged transgression involved the release of closed-session information, and all members of council were named as potential respondents. Further, the investigation took place within the looming shadow of the upcoming municipal election. Breach of a councillor's obligation to maintain the confidentiality of closed-session information is an important concern, and the allegation met our threshold consideration: is it in the public interest to pursue this matter? In the course of our investigation, which included interviews with members of council and outside parties, we concluded that there was insufficient evidence to conclude that the breach involved the release of information to an individual assumed by some member, some number of councillors to be the recipient. Indeed, it became clear that if the breach occurred, it could well have involved a long list of potential recipients. As noted in the outset of this report, we believe that integrity commissioners serve as an independent resource and guide focused on enhancing the municipality's ethical culture. We determined that it would not serve the public interest to pursue interviews with a long list of potential recipients of the confidential information. To do so would have been extremely costly and provide no certainty that a culpable individual member of council could or would be identified. Most importantly, furthering the investigation was not necessary in order to reinforce to members the importance of maintaining the confidentiality of closed-session information. Accordingly, as it was in our discretion to do so, we terminated the inquiry and did not submit a formal report to council. Despite our confidence that members are well aware of their duty to protect the confidentiality of closed-session information and their genuine commitment to abide by that duty, should the matter arise again in the course of the term, our approach may well be different. I won't proceed through the rest of the report. We make some notes in the report regarding some of the themes emerging around the province. We are open for questions, but I was remiss in not introducing myself and my partner. Thank you, John, for the introduction. I'm Janice, and this is Jeff Abrams.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to petitions. Are there any petitions to present? Seeing none, we do have one motion of congratulations, moved by councillor Doherty, seconded by councillor Holland. "That the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Kingston's Red Barons, women hockey players who in the 1960s and 70s served as trailblazers for women's hockey. They competed at the A level, played exciting hockey, and laid the groundwork for several organisations in the Kingston area, up to and including the Ice Wolves of today. Members of the team were instrumental in reviving women's hockey at Queen's and the establishment of the Ontario Women's Hockey Association. Several players were inducted into the Kingston District Sports Hall of Fame. Congratulations to the Red Barons on their 50th anniversary, and we look forward to celebrating your anniversary at this year's Feb Fest." And I believe that there are a few members of the Red Barons who are here in council chambers, so congratulations. So with that, we will call the questions, please. And that carries. We have no deferred motions, so we will move on to reports. First up, we have report number 12 from the CAO.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Chappell, seconded by councillor Stroud, that report number 12 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
So there are four clauses. Would anyone like any of those clauses separated? Councillor Doherty, number one. Okay, so, number two. Okay, so first we will... Madam Deputy Clerk, can I see for a moment? Thank you. So just, just so everyone is following, item number four is an addition to the item on the planning committee report that's coming later on in the agenda. So by passing number four, then that amends the planning report, so just want to make sure everyone's clear on that. So what we'll do first- So what we'll do first of all is we'll call the vote on items three and four. Item number three is the Enterprise Software License Agreement, Esri Canada, and number four supplementary report, Brownfields Community Improvement Plan Amendment, New Project Area, 40 Sir John A. McDonald Boulevard, file number D090072018. So we will call the vote, please. And that carries. Okay, now back to item one, Bill 66, Restoring Ontario's Competitiveness Act 2018. Councillor Doherty.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank city staff for preparing the report to council on Bill 66. It is clear that staff looked at the proposed bylaw very closely, and I'd also like to thank planning staff for submitting a statement of concerns on the environmental registry on the Ontario's website. I know the timing was tight, but you registered the concerns, and that is important, so thank you. I fully support your recommendation to forward this report to the appropriate ministries and to our Member of Provincial Parliament. You mentioned that staff will review other proposed legislative changes and report back to council on any amendments that could impact the delivery of city services. I would like to add to your report to the appropriate ministries with approval from council that we will add the following, that we will not support any proposed legislation that does not adhere to the Clean Water Act, the Great Lakes Protection Act, and the Katerak Source Protection Plan, and that we also add, that we also communicate with the Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks, that we reject Schedule 5, which repeals the Toxic Reduction Act. It is our responsibility to protect source water, it is our responsibility to make sure our drinking water is safe, so I hope council supports me in this. Thanks.
So councillor Doherty, just to clarify, are you putting forward an amendment?
Yes, I'd like to put two amendments forward.
Okay, so I'm going to give you a chance to do those right now, and if I can just get those up on the screen, please.
Okay, can I send it to you?
Yes.
It's here, I'll just forward it, give you an email, it's in here.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Can I just get that on my screen as well? Okay, so we have a motion to amend, so this would be to add the following two paragraphs, that council will not support any proposed legislation that does not adhere to the Clean Water Act, the Great Lakes Protection Act, the Katerak Source Protection Plan, and that council also communicate with the Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks that we reject Schedule 5, which repeals the Toxic Reduction Act. So it's moved by councillor Doherty as their seconder, seconded by councillor Ossanik. Okay, so councillor Doherty, you've spoken to the amendment. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment only, please? Councillor Neal?
Thank you. I totally support the amendment. I know that the provincial government has blinked and they've backed down given the overwhelming criticism from municipalities and individuals for their Schedule 10, which addressed some of those initial concerns around planning, but we also have wording in our official plan, and we also have a commitment for public consultation, and the remaining aspects of the proposed bill would strip away that process. And I doubt very much if this particular council would ever indulge in that kind of activity, but the province is suggesting to empower councils to do exactly that. So supporting this is a reaffirmation of our public consultation process, it's a reaffirmation of our commitment to the environment, so I totally support this.
Thank you. Councillor Ossanik?
Thank you, your worship. I also support this, I just have one question to, through you, your worship, to staff. And when comments were submitted through the environmental registry on January 18th, did we only submit comments with regard to Schedule 10? So the Toxic Reduction Act is Schedule 5, we didn't submit comments at that time on Schedule 5?
Mr. Newman?
Through you, Mayor Patterson, that's correct. We only provided comments on Schedule 10.
Thank you. And when our amendment says that we'll communicate with the Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks, that would cover off the environmental registry, like as part of that same ministry, correct? Or should we change the wording to be the environmental registry?
Through you, Mayor Patterson, we can ensure that the comments provided by council go to the right ministry.
Councillor Bone?
Thank you, your worship and through you. So I'm usually the one to caution not sending things to the other levels of government, but I think in this case, this actually backs up why we shouldn't send too much to the other levels of government, is because when things like this come up, we want to make sure that our voice is heard, and I will be supporting it if it wasn't clear, because these are things that essentially affect everybody, and so this is one of those ones where I think the right thing to do here is to send that notification to the next level. They've sought a lot of consultation on this, they've got a lot of feedback, so this is something that's in keeping with that feedback, and this is a good opportunity to make our voice heard, and so this is one of those opportunities. So I will be supporting it, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stroud?
Thank you, your worship. I'll get right to the point, I guess. I have a question of staff. So the original motion is asking that the report itself be forwarded to the appropriate parties, as it says in the package. This amendment adds the piece of Schedule 5, which was also spoken to by presenter, by Ms. Harmer there. We would be communicating that we reject, but nothing else. Would it be a big deal, I guess, to add a small supplemental piece that speaks to why Schedule 5 is incompatible with certain parts of the municipal legislation, similar to what we did for Schedule 10? Because otherwise, all we're doing is communicating that we reject Schedule 5. I'm wondering if there's any way we can add a supplemental, even just a paragraph, that speaks to what portions of the official plan, for example, that would, there's the reason, that would sort of illustrate the reason why we reject Schedule 5?
Okay, so that's a question of staff. Okay, so I guess, Mr. Newman, I guess my question would be, is if the current wording, which says communicate, is sufficiently broad so that staff would interpret that as also being able to provide any additional comments?
Yes, through you, Mayor Patterson, we can add more of the rationale for a position of opposition to the Schedule 5 changes.
Okay, so there's no need to amend the amendment, and I will wholeheartedly support it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call the vote on the amendment, please. And that carries. Okay, on to now the motion or the item as amended. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Ossanik?
Thank you, your worship. One more question through you to staff, please. And my question is, we heard our delegation tonight mention the Endangered Species Act, and I think that's different than Bill 66, but she asked that staff could maybe also provide comments about the Endangered Species Act, and I just wondered if staff had the intention of submitting comments at some point for that. I know the deadline for that is in March.
Mr. Newman?
Through you, Mayor Patterson, there was not an intention to submit comments as it relates to those changes within this, however, we can look at providing comments through separate correspondence.
Councillor Stroud?
Thank you, your worship. The first member of the public that spoke, who gave us the comments in written form as well, the third bullet of her proposed recommendation to us was that city council requests that any similar successor proposals by the Government of Ontario be reviewed by city staff and reported back to city council. Without that explicitly stated in this recommendation, and seeing as this is a staff recommendation in the first place, what would, without that being formally added to this recommendation, would staff be reviewing successors anyway and possibly coming back with another report if needed?
Acting CEO Hurdle?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the answer to that is yes, we would obviously follow what's going on in terms of this particular bill. The report also speaks to reporting back to council if there are other sections of the bill that council should be aware, and one in particular that we'll most likely report on will be in regards to childcare and bring that information to your attention. So we will be following up and bringing any information back to council.
Okay, so similar to my previous comments on the amendment, I'm satisfied that as amended, this recommendation sends a clear message, and I guess to partially echo councillor Bone's comments, I also have reservations about lobbying other levels of government to the point where when you cry wolf, they don't hear you. This, and I agree, this is not one of those times, however, I think it needs to be acknowledged that we're only here in the first place because of the provincial government, that we were created by the provincial government, and the municipal governments are children of the provincial government, and we know that this government, this provincial government, already changed the size of Toronto City Council from 47 members to 25 members, completely not related to Bill 66, but they did that, and people thought it was not possible, they wouldn't dare, but they did do that. So I would just say that the stakes are high, and this submission is respectful, it is in tone of official correspondence, and it is accompanied by a staff report, which gives the logic of the reasons very clearly explained, as was said already by the presenters, that it's an excellent report. This is the way another level of government, to the provincial, ours, reacts to legislation that puts us in a tough spot. So I'm happy that it's gone in this direction, and I encourage this kind of approach should any more legislation come our way that would drastically alter the quality of life of our residents. It is our moral duty to advocate for them, as we're doing now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I also wanted to mention, it's been said a number of times, that the staff report in this case is excellent, I mean often, that is always the case, I would say that too, but what I think is most important to acknowledge in this report is that it's very comprehensive in terms of outlining how aspects of Bill 66 do not adhere to the objectives of council, and more importantly, how they undermine all the incredible work that has taken place by members of council, staff and members of the community to develop a more transparent and accountable process throughout all of our policymaking. So I think it's important also to acknowledge, as councillor Stroud has, that staff have put this together in a way that is obviously very valuable to us, to members of the public in outlining our principles, and doing so in a very professional manner, and one frankly that I don't think I would be capable of when faced with having to comment on this. So I will give just a little bit of the political rhetoric, given the opportunity, and that is that if there ever is a need for regulation, red tape, it is when it comes to the oversight of the health of a population and the health of the planet, and so the message, I think, from this report is very clear, and I think the political message ought to be as clear, that this type of removal of oversight when it comes to clean water and protecting the environment is completely unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. You will call the vote on item one, please. And that carries. Item two, amendments to the proposed sale of seven right prescent for market and affordable housing. Councillor Neal?
Thank you very much. This has been many years in the making, I think it's been five years that we've owned the property. I really want to applaud staff for reaching out to the neighbourhood, having two really good neighbourhood meetings. What was originally proposed there were two nine-story, fairly dense developments, and what we heard, I believe in November, from a public meeting, and again in a really snowy day a week or two ago, was that people were supportive of the idea of mixed housing, they were supportive of the idea of development going on the site, and they were very thankful that the recommendation going forward was for one-four and one-six story development. Also, there will be a very nice parquet with children's play area added on that site, and so, and a plan to move ahead through Kingston Frontac Housing, I believe, for, I believe it's 40 units of mixed affordable housing. So I want to thank staff for working really hard, I want to thank the community for embracing... I want to thank the community for embracing this really sensible plan, I think. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hill?
So Seven Right Crescent, as you know, is the, or was, the mother house of the Sisters of the Congregation of Notre Dame. And two sisters came here in eighteen forty-two, and were actually housed on the second floor of this building. And I can tell you that one story talks about how they cowered in fear in their second-floor residence here, at the brawling and drunken antics of then-city council. So things have come a long way. But they made an incredible contribution to this community. As you know, they've been dispersed now, some of them have gone back to Montreal, where the mother house is, some of them are residing in seniors' homes here in the city, and others with the Sisters of Providence. But their contribution to this community was incredible. They are the founding Sisters of Notre Dame Convent School, which is now part of Regiopolis Notre Dame. So I would hope that, and I don't know if this requires a motion or not, but I would hope that, in part at least, there is some recognition on the property of the great contribution that the Sisters made to this community. So I just offer that as a suggestion.
Thank you, Counselor Hill, and I think that that's absolutely noted around the table, and will certainly be something that will be honored. Absolutely. Counselor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. Just a question regarding the report. There is reference to the extent to which this will facilitate the Rito Heights revitalization project, and I know that there will be some RGI units at this location, but I was wondering if there was any other, if there were any other ways that this might actually speed up some of the, what the plans are for the Rito Heights area, specifically maybe the potential of financing new development in Rito Heights because of this property? Or any kind of potential to, I mean, I know that, you know, part of the plan is to move some of the units, but will there be any benefit to the work that's taking place on-site in Rito Heights because of this?
Mr. Levan?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think the key benefit, as Counselor Holland has mentioned, is of course, the movement of units out of the Rito Heights neighborhood. There was a building that was able to be torn down already, near the Wally Almer site, to allow the Shannon Park to be redeveloped, and Rito Heights Community Centre developed. We are working on additional plans to, the ultimate goal is to remove a hundred units out of that neighborhood, so this, we're now well on our way. This will take us to, I believe, the thirty percent mark of that goal, so it is well on its way. I don't know that there is a specific other linkage that will help financially. We do intend to bring a report back in the next couple of months, as to how we may fund this forty-unit building on the site, and once we know that, there may be other opportunities that may come about.
CEO Hurdle?
Thank you, and just maybe to add to that, one of the things that it will help with, and indirectly with Rito Heights, will be to provide KFHC with a broader range in terms of types of units. So it will help them to generate more revenues through some of the market units they will have on-site, and as you know, KFHC is the main organization that needs to regenerate some of their units in Rito Heights. So they'll be able to leverage those units in the future to be able to move ahead with construction of new units elsewhere in the city.
Okay, so we will call the vote on item two, please.
Still waiting for one, please.
And that carries. Okay, on to report number thirteen from the CEO.
Moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor Ossanik, that report number thirteen from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted.
So there's just the one clause, transmittal of annual report from principles integrity. We'll call the vote, please. Report number fourteen from Planning Committee?
It's my pleasure to submit report number fourteen from the Planning Committee, duly moved and seconded.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Ossanik, that report number fourteen from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there are two clauses. The first clause is approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment, two oh three to two oh five Colburn Street. Clause two, Brownfields Community Improvement Plan Amendment, new project area forty, Sir John A. McDonald Boulevard. Would we like those items separated? Okay, so first we will call the vote on item one. And that carries. Now, item two, Counselor Doherty.
Thank you, and through you, I just have a question regarding this property. It's the prison for women property, and I just wonder, when Queen's bought it from Canada lands, did it go through an environmental process?
Who would like to answer that? Acting CEO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the information is that there was, at the time, I guess, an assessment that was done, now recognizing that the environmental regulations were not obviously what they are today. So I'm not sure what amount of information was made available at that time to Queen's, but I believe that there was some preliminary information that was provided.
Just one more question to that. So you are recommending that there is further need for an environmental assessment? That definitely is the need, right?
Mr. Hugelbusch?
Yes, through you, Mayor. So what council's being asked tonight is to support a new project area for the Brownfields. What that will do is the property owner can then make an application to the city and submit all necessary studies and reports showing the amount of contamination, or what needs to be funded within the rules of the Brownfield CIP program, and then staff can evaluate that and make a recommendation to council for Brownfield's benefits, if that's the case.
Counselor Stroud?
Thank you, your worship. Follow-up question to staff. So this, first of all, the item that was on the added was an administrative correction of the report number and nothing else, no change to the substance of the report?
Acting CEO Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, so further to what Mr. Hugelbusch was just saying about the Brownfield, so that's what might result, if recommended by staff, in incremental tax reduction over a period of years, to help recoup the costs of the environmental remediation?
Mr. Hugelbusch?
Yes, that's correct. The Brownfields program is set up to fund any eligible cost based on a recommendation brought forward by staff and a council acceptance of that recommendation. Can be anywhere from a couple of years, up until a maximum of ten years, based on a percentage, up to eighty percent, of the incremental taxes that come in from a new development on the property. And there is sliding scale opportunities in the Brownfield CIP for projects that have a very large redevelopment with a large incremental tax that may have relatively smaller environmental costs. So not every site receives maximum benefit over the, either the percentage or the number of years.
Acting CEO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through you. So I just want to add to that, just to be clear, I don't want to confuse members of council. We're not recommending tonight that council actually approves the Brownfield and the tax reduction. We're strictly recommending that this property be identified and designated as an area for future consideration.
Thank you. And just so it's clear for members of public, mostly, I think it's clear to many of us here, but there's a few new councillors and there's members of public interested in this site that may not know how this works. So if we didn't do this, designate it as Brownfield, we wouldn't have this mechanism at our disposal. But on the other hand, if this site remained undeveloped, as it has for the last ten years, what is the tax revenue the city recollects currently?
Is there any member of staff that happens to have that number at their fingertips? Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, through your worship. Unfortunately, no, I do not have that. It actually has been undergoing some change, because when Queen's owned it, it was not assessed, so it would be exempt, and through the payment and loose, we wouldn't be getting anything. Over time, MPAC has actually been looking at that and been working with Queen's, and we expect we will have a retro amount for that, because it has not been used for education purposes, and then was subsequently sold. So I don't have an assessment on what it's going to be going forward from MPAC at this point.
Thank you. I guess, maybe I should refocus the question. I'm looking, so is there a time-sensitive element to it, in the sense that now that it's under private ownership, if we don't pass this Brownfields and allow this mechanism, does the, do the tax, is there a tax burden on the owner? And is there a current tax burden on the owner that they cannot recuperate until they develop?
Acting CEO Hurdle?
So through, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to try to answer the question if I understood correctly. I mean, the current site obviously doesn't have a whole lot of development on it, so the assessment would be based on the existing site and the taxes. I'm not sure that currently there would be a huge burden, but I think it's more in the long term, in terms of the other uses that could be integrated on the site, would bring up the value, obviously, of the site in terms of the assessment and increase, obviously, the tax that would be generated. I'm not sure if this answers your question, or if I understood your question correctly.
No, that's fine. I really, I guess I'm just trying to illustrate how it goes from an unutilized site to a potentially developed site, and then with the environmental, and the environmental cost that it, once it's identified, the city helps the owner meet that burden with the Brownfields project, basically. And just in case there are some questions about what we're actually doing here, I'm trying to put it into one sentence. And thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Counselor Neal. Counselor Neal?
Thank you very much. I just have two quick questions. The proposed environmental assessment, will that just be an external assessment, or will that they actually assess inside the building as well? And the other thing, I just want to get confirmation that, that any development will go through a full public heritage process and a full public planning process? If you could answer those questions.
So two questions. Mr. Hugelbusch?
Yes, through you, your worship. The answer to the first question is, yes, the environmental work is not just limited to ground contamination. There could be hazardous materials in the building that do have eligibility within the Brownfields program.
Mr. Newman?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. Yeah, the future use and development of the site would go through both Heritage and Planning Act review.
Okay, we will call the vote then on clause two. And that carries. On to report number fifteen from Heritage Kingston. Who has report number fifteen from Heritage Kingston?
I do.
Counselor Doherty?
I'm pleased to move and report from Heritage, duly moved and seconded.
Moved by Counselor Doherty, seconded by Counselor Neal, that report number fifteen from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
So there are four clauses. Would anyone like any of the clauses separated? Counselor Bohm, number four. Okay, so first we will vote on clause one, two, and three. And that carries. Now on to clause four, review of Heritage Kingston. Counselor Bohm?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I just have a small amendment to this. Couple of residents raised a good point on this, and it was, so line five, it's already been submitted to the clerk, but line five would just basically be changed to read heritage staff member, cultural staff member, and preferably two members with experience in Bill Heritage. So the point that was raised was basically that, seeing as this is a working group, this is, and the Heritage Committee has kind of undergone a few iterations over the last few times, that this would be a great chance to try to get it right. So let's put the staff resources that we have to this, and a cultural staff resource would also be something that they could draw upon, as there's already a heritage staff member there. So it's just a small little amendment to try to increase the functionality and the resources of the working group.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend on the floor, moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Hill. So everyone's clear, it's to insert the words "cultural staff member" immediately after heritage staff member in the resolve clause. So any debate or discussion with respect to the amendment only, please. Counselor Stroud?
So asking the mover. So adding one member to the working group from our cultural department, is that what that means?
That's correct.
Okay. And staff, can I just kind of nod that that's the way it's interpreted, that it would be a member of cultural staff, a member of the cultural department?
Acting CEO Hurdle?
Thank you, and through, Mr. Mayor. So that would be my assumption, but I am not, obviously, the mover, so I, but that would be the staff assumption.
Okay, just clarifying it. To the amendment, this, I understand, was brought to Heritage by the current vice chair, and who's the longest-serving member on that committee, and was deferred at Heritage a year ago, roughly, just under a year ago. And in that time, he did not add any more pieces to it. And in, for respect for my former vice chair, I'm going to vote against this amendment, because I, I'm pretty sure he considered that aspect when he wrote his review motion, and it passed unanimously at Heritage Kingston, so I don't think now is a good time to change the motion. So we're voting against the amendment.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak to the amendment only, please? We will call the question. And that carries by a vote of six to five. Now, on the motion, or on the item as amended, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, we will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, report number sixteen from the Arts Recreation Community Policies Committee.
It's my pleasure to present report number sixteen from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Bohm. Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Bohm, that report number sixteen from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, there's just the one clause, approval of the Kingston Arts Council Plan for administration of arts funding for the Corporation of the City of Kingston in 2019. We'll call the vote, please. We'll call the vote, please. And that carries. We have nothing from committee of the whole, we have no information reports, we have no information reports from members of council. Miscellaneous business, we do have one motion, and so I am looking for a volunteer for an appointment to the Agnes Etherington Arts Center Advisory Board. Counsel Stroud.
I just need to ask a question about the schedule of meetings before I take on any more commitment. Does anyone know when this board meets and how often?
Mr. Clerk or Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have that information?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. This isn't a committee that's supported by the Clerk's Department, so unfortunately I don't have that information available, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that, that is a pretty important piece of information, so I'll take, I'll take a volunteer now if we have one, and if not, then we can defer it to the next meeting to get that information. Okay, so we'll just defer. So can I have a, can I have a motion to defer, please? Moved by Counsel Neal, seconded by Deputy Mayor Chappell, to defer to the next meeting to get to information on scheduled meetings. And that carries. Okay, we have one new motion, moved by Counsel Doherty, seconded by Counsel Neil, whereas IBI Group has submitted an application for site plan control for the property municipally known as 1102 King Street West, Kingston, and whereas the delegation of authority by law allows for council to bump up sites, plan, and control applications to the Planning Committee, therefore be it resolved that the site plan control application from IBI Group for the property municipally known as 1102 King Street West outline in report number D11 dash zero one one dash 2018 be bumped up to the Planning Committee. Counsel Doherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to, just mention to my fellow counselors that this is, this is a proposal for two high-rises, one for twenty-three stories and the other one for twenty. It includes six hundred and fifty onsite parking spaces and three, four, three hundred and forty-three dwelling units. It is the type of property, it, it's also built on a pier, I believe it really has to go through the planning process correctly. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counsel Ossanek.
Thank you, Your Worship. I support the bump up. It was a long time ago that it was last at Planning Committee, so to get an update for our Planning Committee, for all of the city, to see the final plans, I think is really important. Thank you.
Okay, we will call the vote then on the new motion. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk asks for minutes, please.
Moved by Counsel McLaren, seconded by Deputy Mayor Chappell, that the minutes of City Council meeting number 2019-05, held Tuesday, January 22nd, 2019, be confirmed.
And that carries. We have some tabling of documents, a number of communications, is there any other business? Mr. Clerk asks for bylaws, please.
Before I begin reading the votes, I just would like to clarify that because of the amendment that was approved to Planning Committee report with regards to forty, Sir John A. McDonald Boulevard, bylaw number four has been withdrawn, and bylaw number ten has been added. Moved by Counsel Ossanek and seconded by Counsel Holland, that bylaws two, three, five through eight, ten, and nine be given their first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Counsel Ossanek, seconded by Counsel Holland, that clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010 dash one, as amended, be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws three, eight, and ten three readings.
And that carries.
Moved by Counsel Ossanek, seconded by Counsel Holland, that bylaws one through three, five through eight, ten, and nine be given their third reading.
And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counsel Neal, seconded by Counsel Hill. Please vote. No, this is not early, this is, this is the target time, this is, this is when we should try to end.
One more, please.
And that carries by a vote of nine to two. Thank you, and we are adjourned.